Somebody like to make a motion to go into executive session?
I so moved.
Do you want to read that, Bob?
Sure, it's executive session pursuant to 4056A to discuss the personnel matter, and 4056F as Philbrook Fund trustee to discuss applications.
Is there any discussion here or none?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Read it first.
You all set, Katie?
Executive session to act on the Philbrook Fund matters and then to convene a regular meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion here or none? All those in favor? Here is Katie.
Hi.
Okay, nope, sorry. All right, Bob, would you like to make some motions?
Sure, on 2021-8, I move 85178. On 2021-9, I move that we deny. And on the tax-acquired property, I move that we authorize our assessor and town manager to come up with a program.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion here or none? All those in favor? Katie, get her hand up. Okay, cool. I guess we'll call a meeting to order. You all set, Max?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody rise.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united by indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
All right. Yep, and we have another presentation from Saran Pye. You are up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening. My name is Saran Pye, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the AD Gray Coalition. As before, we come here to urge you to delay all negotiations with Volunteers of America and for you to decide to give the citizens an opportunity to vote on whether they want an in-town park. Some of you may be considering that the park project can coexist with a proposal by Volunteers of America. That is not possible. You may be thinking that the area of the proposed park is considered 8.6 acres. This is not correct for a number of reasons. The three lots, less the triangle across the street from the school building, are perhaps 8.2 acres. We don't really know because there are no surveys that I know of of the property. Regardless, let's go with 8.2 acres. Of those 8.2 acres, the athletic fields already encompass, again, approximately four acres. The parcel with the school building and the tennis courts is approximately 2.4 acres. The intervening lot is 2.23 acres. Lot 63 includes the former school building and the tennis courts. And we, as we have said before, the tennis courts should be removed from the wetland and the wetland buffer, and the area should be restored. That is the right thing to do. That is the responsible way to demonstrate good stewardship. Once removed, that area is essentially unbuildable. It is open green space, which is all good, but it's not an area where you could put a gazebo or a children's playground. So if, as some suggest, perhaps even the recreation committee, that there's plenty of room for everyone, that is not the case. Volunteers of America is proposing 16 units to be located in the current building. Then they want an additional 16 units in an annex, and that building will then dwarf the remaining 2.23 acres. It will be right up against what some people would call a park. The existing AD structure is over 30 feet high and would cast a large shadow over lot 62 and what has ever left of lot 63, varying at different times of the day. The addition of an, I'm sorry, the addition to the AD Gray building to house an additional 16 apartments would cast an even greater shadow and would never be considered in any normal park design. Such a large building with the annex would sharply negate the usefulness, the usefulness of the value of the park and the aesthetic value of the park. So our group is all for senior housing subsidized by the federal and state funds, and Waldenboro has, is blessed with plenty of acreage and potential sites, and there should be several others more suitable for Volunteers of America. I want just quickly touch on four issues. One has to do with someone had mentioned, why would we want a park on a dead-end street? I would submit to you, you would want a park on a dead-end street because you don't have a lot of traffic going by. In fact, we even had the baseball field there. So it's been there for quite some time on a dead-end street. The second thing I wanted to ask is, was mentioned at the last select board meeting that this proposal by the Volunteers of America was not going to go before the voters. And I question what authority the select board has to enter into a real estate transaction without going before the voters, without putting that to vote. Number three, our pledges now exceed $180,000, and we have not gone into an active phase of fundraising. So you need to keep that in mind. And number four, which is perhaps most important, we are proceeding with petitions to get this place on the ballot in June. So, and final, we need as a town to elevate and enhance the heart of Waldenboro. We need the center of our town to be a place for all people and to have a lovely in-town park where everyone will go. Thank you.
Do you want any questions, Bob, or have you got any? Does the select board get any questions? I don't hear any.
Do you want me to back?
Yeah, sure.
So I did. It does have to go before the voters, Saran. It does. And you and I had discussed that last week. It does. How that looks is up to the select board. I mean, it's a question, what you want to add to that question. I mean, that's going to have to be something you guys discuss. Now, if you want the MOU out, you know, that's, I'm for if you're going to put it out, it should be there so people can look at it and know what they're talking about. And that gets rid of a lot of the telephone tag, or not telephone, what is it? When you play telephone, you tell one person it's different than the next time and the next time. So I mean, I think that's...
So what you're saying is we, if the MOU is voted on, agreed on, then it's out in the public?
Then it's a public document.
Then people know exactly what's in it?
Correct.
Nobody knows what's in there right now, other than the...
The AD Gray committee.
And that's it?
Right.
Correct. I just want to make that clear.
Right. And that's why I put it on tonight. I wasn't sure where we were. I had sent that out to BOA, but that has to go on the ballot.
But we have to make action to be able to put it on the ballot?
Correct. And I would assume you would do that at the next meeting. I was trying to be proactive and make sure we had all our ducks in a row.
Okay. None of the select board have any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I be in ten?
Probably go to citizens' comments. We'll wait till then. Any adjustments to the agenda? Here or none? Citizens' comments? I'm sure we must have a few. Get a full house tonight.
We just have to make sure we don't start...
My name is Jerry Clark. I've been a resident in Waldenboro for about 24 years. I've been a volunteer for many nonprofit organizations and also many municipal committees. I feel that I've been engaged and supported Waldenboro many ways. I was the manager of the Waldenboro Farmers Market for five years, and also I managed Waldenboro Day for five years. Sure. But that was tough. I was the one who moved into AD Gray School. That was a tough year. But I really think that these can coexist. And the fact that, oh, you can't site a gazebo there, whatever, do we really need a gazebo? At one point, we had a band playing on top of the town dock. And so it doesn't have to be, and that had a nice position. We still had vendors all around it. We had a tent, a huge tent, was it 100 by 60 tent with tables and chairs under it? So I mean, there's, and that was in the flat spot. We also had the dunk tank. We had the bounce house. We had all kinds of, there seemed to be room for, in my opinion, for a park-like environment. And I believe it is a baseball field, it is a soccer, you know, field at this point in time. And the people that use the park also use the trail around it, which is on private property, and people graciously allow us to maintain that, which is really nice. There are other parks in the town which are really lovely, the River Park down by the American Legion Hall. There's the Dutchneck Marine Park, which has more trails on it, and we'll soon have a ribbon cutting to open up more trails. And again, I think housing for seniors, again, this is not subsidized housing, it's low-income housing. So it's seniors that are living on social security. Hopefully, many people in this town would be able to apply and to be there. Obviously, it's got to be open to the nation, I guess, which may, you know, it may be a good thing. Maybe they're moving to be closer to their relatives. I mean, could be a good thing. And I think it would be wonderful to have seniors living next to a park. So when their family comes to visit, the kids have a place to play. That's, that's a great idea, I think. I think a lot of the seniors that moved to this area would be the ones who participate and volunteer in the environment, the ones who helped maintain flower boxes and water things and just do little things to keep things up. Maybe they join the garden club. I think there's a lot of potential for some of the older people in the community and ones that come here to participate and to engage. And I just wonder, you know, this grand idea for a plan to turn this into some wonderful park with a gazebo, with music, with concert events, with community gardens and farmers' markets, who's going to manage it? You're going to build this wonderful thing or create this wonderful thing with an anonymous coalition with undisclosed donors from many people from away that don't even live here? Who are these people? Why do, are they more qualified to decide what the town needs than the citizens? The citizens did have a non-binding vote, and I think that says a lot. We all are allowed to have differing opinions, but I think both sides should be heard. And I really, from utilizing that park for Waldenboro Day, I think there's a lot of potential there, and it doesn't have to be changed. And the building, maybe there's got to be some limitations on what the building could be and what it takes up. Maybe there is wetland concerns that haven't been fully addressed. But this is one of the first times that we've had a true solid use for the building that's there. We went through all kinds of things with the town that food saved, where we were going to have a culinary school there. We were going to have, the YMCA was going to build, and then it became too expensive for them to, to put the community center there, so they backed out. And then we had the Madoff Community Foundation. They had wonderful plans for community center, but they just had, you know, unreliable income source that didn't allow the business plan to be, you know, functional. So that was too bad. So, like, 15 years, we've had visioning sessions, we've had surveys, we've had discussions for people, we've had group meetings, we've had, for so many years, we've been talking about it, we finally have this solid organization that does have a true plan, that has funding to back it. And, and it's not exclusive with a park, in my opinion. People are allowed to differ, but I think that the, most of the townspeople have been through so much with this AD Gray School thing. We want it to be a usable building. We've been through so much to save it. In the first few years, when it was unusable by the town, we had to put money in, we had to invest a lot in it because the plug, the drainage system ran inside the building. So we had to move all of the gutter systems outside of the building so we didn't have to heat the building through every single winter that it wasn't occupied. And so there was investments made. People care about that building, they went to school there. I think Volunteers of America came across an existing facility that they thought was quite functional, and they felt that it would be useful to, to make it something usable for the community. So I think that it's not a mutually exclusive situation. I think we could have a park and we could have senior housing, and I think that's quite viable. Thank you.
Anyone else? See ya.
For the record, my name is Sam Cohen. I don't know if all of you know me or probably you've heard of me, and I hope it was all good. The last time I was here was to oppose the Y, and I almost got booed out of this place. And I hope some people remember that I opposed that, and if people had gone along with me with the town's recreational funds, it would be a lot more than it is now. But I'm here to urge the board to have a binding survey to the citizens of the town of Waldenboro, whether they want a park, an subsidized elderly housing. The last survey that the town did, there was no alternative. I would suggest that we have a survey or a vote with alternatives. What do the residents want? I also want to point out, this lady mentioned we have a ballpark there already. I drove up by there today. I wonder how many of you have looked at the condition of that field? It's not playable. I remember I played Babe Ruth ball there, high school ball there. Waldenboro had a town team back in the 50s and 60s where they drew, I bet, 700 or 800 people at one time. They had lights, portable lights for people to come. There were 700 or 800 people attending that. It's, it's a disgrace to the town of Waldenboro, in my opinion, to let that ballpark leave it in the condition it is. And the recreational, this AD Gray group have ideas of improving that, so it's playable. I believe that some of the kids, organized teams refused to play on that field because it was in such poor condition. The backboard is falling down, the fence is falling down, the large beaches, benches have been removed. As I said, I urge you, and this group would improve that field. I'm wondering, has there been a survey or diligence research whether this building is rehabitable? It's, ride by it and see what condition it is now, and I'm wondering if they've done a structural test on it, a research. This group is made up of citizens, United States, United States of Waldenboro, who want to improve the atmosphere around Waldenboro for the benefit of Waldenboro people. We don't have to bring in outsiders and subsidized housing or low-income housing. We need to improve the town for the citizens of Waldenboro. And I also raised the question, I think it's been brought up, I don't know if the town can enter into agreement to convey this property with a vote of the town. I tried to do some quick research today, and I didn't find, would the selectmen have the authority?
It requires a vote by the town.
That's what I'm saying.
But not the MOU, right?
Not the MOU, but the actual transfer of the property...
Not the MOU.
The actual transfer of the property requires a vote of the town. The MOU is not binding, but at least it sets out what the AD Gray committee has recommended be in the option agreement. But that way, people will make an informed decision.
That's what I, that's what this group is asking for, an informed decision. Saran has made points of most of the things, and a lot of the things I had marked out here, but I noticed that Barbara Bowman made a comment that tennis courts are only seasonal. A lot of the purposes of this park is seasonal. There's a lot of citizens, women and men in Waldenboro, that can't find places to play tennis. There is a need for tennis courts in this town. There's a need for, and there is walk-in areas. My wife and I will, used to walk at the Y and pay $5 a person to walk. They ruled that you have to now pay for family membership, $700 to $750, there was, just for using one facility. I don't know the, how much they pay to use the tennis courts, but there are a lot of people that play tennis in this area, right, Sheldon?
Yes.
And it would be huge, and it is seasonal, but it's a need for this town. When my, when my wife played tennis before she had her knees replaced, her, she and her friends had a couple getting, finding courts in the area. They went to Round Pond, they went to Newcastle, where people found tennis courts. There is a need for that. And this property, in my opinion, is unique for a park. It's where a lot of, it's in the center of town, where people could walk, a lot of people could walk to it. It's, once they use the facilities, they could walk downtown and use what facilities are in town, like the Narrows, right, Jeff?
Yeah.
And, but I don't think a senior citizen's establishment will add much to this town economically, and will be a demand for the services and overburden the citizens' facilities like the fire department, ambulance service, things of that nature.
Anybody else?
Yeah. My name is Glenn Barber. I'm a resident. I'm here tonight to show my support for the park at AD Gray. Most of all, I've been following the progress for a while now, and I'll be honest, I usually try to stay behind the scenes and let things be what they are. There isn't a whole lot of power in one person usually, so I just stay behind, but I'm kind of in awe after watching the most recent meeting on the select board that they held on YouTube. I was actually horrified. What I saw was precisely and exactly what is wrong with the government these days. I won't mention any names tonight, but I, what I, what I said, what I saw representing us residents was childish and quite ridiculous. I heard nothing but baseless comments, tons of personal opinion, and saw many tantrums thrown with arms crossing and pounding fists on the table. Like a child, sorry, that was in parentheses. You guys nailed it, I got to say. You showed exactly what is wrong with politics and the government right now, from the town office that we're here in tonight, all the way to the White House in our nation. Congrats on that. I feel a large park, I feel a large park would enhance our town to the fullest, eliminating overflowing traffic from the town office for things like farmers' market and the COVID-19 relief truck that's been here every so often, which is great. But when you're clogging Route 1, a main US artery to do it, there's something wrong. We have plenty of space in Waldenboro to do that kind of thing, but you've got to make it so people want to come to it, and they don't want to come down to a rundown ball field. They don't want to go to a 32-unit housing unit and go walk around it. Upon endless, endless other options, as someone that has seen their fair share of the impact of the opioid crisis, maybe, just maybe, if a park and the activities that come with a park were here, we could have been spared just a little bit in my generation. I have equal love for the elderly and the youth of this area. I've got both. Generations, I've been here 37 years, just like Gavin's been here, however many more. But if you don't help the youth with things like the opioid addiction crisis and to have things for them to do around them, kids, you won't have any elderly in the future to worry about. I promise you, they'll either move away or OD. I'll close with that. In my, in my own head, it's a no-brainer. Help five or 10 residents of the area out of 32 units, if we're lucky, or help hundreds, even thousands of residents with a park and all its uses to enhance our town. As I voted no on this, and my wife, a lot of residents were left with a choice of doing nothing or something. Of course, they will pick something, but I think a lot of residents agree, a better something is here in front of us. And I assure you, for the people that are concerned with Volunteers of America and their multi-whatever million nonprofit, so to say, they will find another piece of property in this fine mid-coast region if they are so dedicated and willing to do so for our residents. They will. But you can't plop a park on just any, I mean, Dutchneck land and people. I mean, if you want your truck vandalized, go down to that park. If you want to go sit at the three picnic tables across from Hanipit, there's a park. I mean, do I have to say anymore? Sammy said it perfect with the ball field condition, and I won't even get into the AD Gray property and the shape that's in. I went to school there. I ran cross-country around the trail. That building is long gone. For people that have a sentimental value, it's time to move on. I went to that school. If anyone should have sentimental value, it should be me, and I do, you know? Like I said, I have equal love for elderly and kids and parks and low-income housing. As far as having both, I mean, I think we all know, the last thing that elderly want with their peaceful new unit is a bunch of activity and kids running around their backyards. And that's just one quick example of why both would not work. Size of land is a whole other issue with parks. And another thing is, I watched last meeting, and the discussion you all had on what color flowers the town would use and the town pots as Shia was quite the turnaround from the discussion on the park. I must say, if you all talked with the respect and dignity like you did with that topic of the flower pots right after, things would start to go in the other direction with government and politics. And I'm not speaking to all of you. I added at the very last minute, two of you should be, should be proud of your great professionalism. Some of us citizens in this town with concern may have only been here a few months, some of us have been here for decades. Either way, are you going to take the concern or well-being of a special interest group that can go anywhere, from out of state, there from out of state, over your own townspeople? I'm going to leave you with that tonight. Thank you for listening. Thank you for listening.
I just, we just need to get, we're good now on the ordinances.
Is there any more citizens' comments, real quick? Got to move along. We got a budget committee meeting tonight, so we're trying to hurry things along. Here none.
I would like to say something.
Yeah, just a second, Katie. We're going to select board comments right now.
No, I mean, as a, as a citizen.
Oh, okay.
I'm not a selectman right now. I am coming to you as a citizen of this town. And I feel as though, at this point in time, it isn't about the BOA or the park, but to put a question from the park coalition on the ballot and let the people decide, if it turns out to be that the people want an elderly housing project, then all is, all is, the decision has been made and all is well and good. At least you gave the opportunity to the residents a chance to vote and let the people, let the people decide on the subject. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. All right, we'll move along to select board comments. Bob, do you have any?
I don't.
Yep. Colonel?
No.
Jan?
Well, it's going to, but I guess not.
All right. Katie, do you have anything as a select board member?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, we'll move along. Town managers' report.
In the spirit of saving time, I'm going to say no.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing. Amendment to the Waldenboro Shellfish Conservation Ordinance.
Correct.
Would somebody like to make a motion to open up the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Would you like me to give a brief overview?
Yep, those, all those in favor? Okay.
Aye.
So this was brought up at the two Shellfish Committee meetings ago.
Yes.
Our two new members, two, the two new members of the Shellfish Committee were the ones who brought this up. And what will happen is, in the past, it has been the term resident, if you had been here physically residing here for at least three months, you could establish your domicile here and get a license. And the recommendation from the Shellfish Committee was that we change that to one year. And proof of residency will require two forms of evidence of Waldenboro residency for one full year. It gave a, not an all-inclusive list, but what could be utilized, and that would be what the change is. It's going from three months to 365 days, one year residency, before you could get a commercial shellfish license. And that's strictly for commercial shellfish licenses.
Any comments? Bob?
Yeah, Abbott, as a chairman of the Shellfish Committee.
Yes.
Is this fairly typical of what?
Yes, actually, we're still less restrictive than most towns. Like, our neighbors next door are two years, you have to be a resident.
So we're just catching up, basically.
Yeah. I mean, it's been that way since the ordinance started. We've had people jump in and out. They'll jump in for three months, get their resident license, and then move back out, you know? So, so that's been an issue, and some of the guys, the new guys on the board would like to have that fixed. So that's, that's what we did, so.
So, sorry.
Go ahead.
So the process would be to approve this for inclusion on the warrant, and then there'd be a public hearing on it prior to the June 8th election?
Correct.
Anybody else get any questions? All right, so somebody would like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. To act on the amendments to the Waldenboro Shellfish Conservation Ordinance, somebody like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the ordinance for inclusion on the June warrant and have a public hearing prior to the vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we get another one. I see our fire chief is here now. Amendment to the town Waldenboro's fire department insurance claim and restoration ordinance?
Restitution.
Restitution, sorry. Would somebody like to make a motion to open up?
Could everybody kind of quiet down?
They wanted to be here for the other park that we just missed, but they had the executive session sign still up, so they stayed out there and then joined in.
Whose responsibility is that?
They didn't join in because of that, and so they were out there waiting until the executive session, and nobody signed.
Oh.
So, a lot of people have commented, wanted to leave.
Hearing for the insurance, Waldenboro Fire Department insurance claims restitution.
Are they out there still?
Yeah.
All right, we'll get, we'll get this done, and then we'll come back.
We'll get this done, and then we can come back in.
Open the public hearing. Is there, is there, somebody make a motion?
So moved.
And you did, Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Katie? All right. Any public comments on this, or what do you have? We have the fire chief?
Do you want to just briefly explain it?
Yep.
The change to the ordinance?
Yeah, the change to the ordinance, a little while ago, Peg. Our finance director, Mr. Butler, deputy fire chief and myself, met with our billing company to discuss our ordinance. One of the things that came out of it was that we didn't have a complete set of fee schedule on it. What we had used, I was trying to be efficient when we wrote the ordinance, using the FEMA rates, that wasn't what they recommended, and they felt that it should be clarified into a fee schedule that, that we could use, and that's what we've done, and that's what's listed here under the cost section of.
Go ahead, Bob, sorry.
So, Paul, this is a, actually, an administrative cleanup for the ordinance, or is this something you feel should be going to the voters because it's an actual change in the substance of the ordinance?
It is not a change in the substance. As you, I like the way you put it, administrative cleanup, makes it cleaner and neater and easier for us to administer in the future.
So that's something the select board can do?
Yep. Cool. Any other comments from the select board or anything? Anybody from the audience? Got any questions for the chief? Here or none? Would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the hearing.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Would somebody like to act on this amendment?
I move the select board approve the amendment and change to this ordinance as an administrative change.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. New business. What's the MEACC application?
That would be Max.
Okay. Max, you're up front and center.
Well, fortunately, Karen's already left, so thank everyone. This is just a simple thing. The Conservation Commission would like to just sign on to the main association conservation groups. It's state application. Karen has left, right, Peg?
Yeah, I believe so. Do you need me to see if she's still around?
No. This was voted on by the Conservation Commission last year and, or last week. They just need permission from the select board to submit the application. It's that simple.
Should we make a motion for that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep. Would somebody like to make a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, cool. Oh, probably should come back to citizens' comments.
Yeah, in case there was somebody.
Is there anybody here for citizens' comments?
I don't know if anybody's.
They're waiting outside.
Go ask them.
We are, Melvin.
We always wait for you, Melvin. You finally showed up.
Well, nobody, you know, this communication here is pretty important. I talked to Katie, and she told me 6 o'clock. I was here at 6:00.
Yep. Well, it says right on the top of my paper, 5:00.
So I don't find you.
That, I'm going to take the responsibility for that. Normally, Max pulls the thing and I, but ultimately, it's my fault, so.
So you people have probably heard all about the AD Grade school that you want to hear. But I am still in favor of a public park for everybody in town instead of 34 units for 34 people. I've heard comments that this is not Section 8 housing. It has to be Section 8 housing for the federal government to put any money into it. It has to meet Section 8 requirements. And the Sproul Block was built in my time here in Waldenboro, and that was not going to be, that was going to be housing for the elderly, housing for the elderly. Now, everybody's in there, because it was built Section 8 standards. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Cool. All right, so we'll move on.
I'd just like to thank, and some people left before I could, but just thank everybody for coming and, and speaking, you know, your piece. I think that's important. I've received a lot of emails this week, and again, the last time, about two weeks ago, and calls, and, and I think that's important, that, that people communicate, get the real information out there. So thank you, thank you for coming.
This will move on to 10-2, Volunteers of America.
I had put that on in case we were ready to proceed, just so that it was on the agenda if we were ready. People would know that it was potentially on. I would say the next meeting, it may be.
So do you want to table it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I would table it.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move we table the BOA discussion until next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that'll be one of the things on the.
Can I just ask a question about that one?
Sure.
If I understand correctly, the intent of the select board is that once you have finalized the memorandum of understanding agreement with Volunteers of America, you are going to present it to the citizens and then allow them to vote on it in the June election?
Is that how that works?
I would, that, it, before the property can be transferred, it has to be voted on by the public.
Okay.
So the timing of that, whether MOU would come first, then option agreement, that's in that timeframe.
All right. 10-3, the recreational committee recommendation for the AD Grade.
I have Marcus with us.
Marcus.
Look at Marcus, he's in the back there.
Can you hear us, Marcus?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, so.
You might want to just ask him to summarize it, I guess.
Would you summarize the recommendation from the AD Grade Committee?
From the recreation.
Recreation Committee on AD Grade, sorry.
You guys all got the paper, it's about a page, but it just states that any, any, you know, park or enhancement of the property at AD Grade would be a benefit to the town. Yeah, we believe it could be with or without BOA. You know, there, there can be improvement there and use, like, we've talked about whether, whether BOA gets the building portion or not, the town's still going to own seven and a half acres there, and as a citizen may know earlier, it definitely needs some love. We have some work we have to do there, but the, our main priority for our rec committee when we were charged two years ago was to come up with a community center. We've been working on that, and so any project that the town works on, you know, as far as recreation is concerned, kind of has to fall into our, you know, levels of priority. And as a committee, we thought that, you know, the, the community center would definitely come before a park. We would also urge that any, if BOA does go through any payments in lieu or whatever agreement you have with them, could be used for like a, what was it, recreation improvement fund to upgrade the rest of that property. But like the gentleman said earlier, and had a hard time hearing, I couldn't hear his name, but the backstop is in bad shape, and the fence could use some work as well. So that's kind of our recommendation going forward. Any questions? I can do my best.
I guess the question I have for you is, has there ever been any money set aside to take care of that place, the ball fields?
Well, Marcus has put things in the budget, and you can't go by what happened last year, as we know, because basically, we cut lots out of that department. But Marcus can tell, talk to you more about what it needs and what money. Is the backstop that we put in this year for that field or for, no?
No. Now, the backstop that was put in, the new red fields over behind Miller School.
Correct.
The frost has heaved it up to the point where the top beam is leaning on the concession stand behind it. That field is used for baseball significantly more than AD Grade. AD Grade is our main soccer field, and it's wonderful for that, it's in great shape that way, but we don't use, we use it for like T-ball and farm team practices and whatnot, but that field isn't really up to standards for little league use anymore. And just the, the backstop. The base of it is okay, it's wood, but some of the top rust members, I had an old mesh wire. It is, if we're going to, if we're going to put any money into that property to fix it up, that's probably, you know, that, the tennis courts and that are kind of first priority in, in my opinion.
Select board have any questions? Go ahead, Bob.
Yep. Marcus, if you're developing a long-term development plan or improvement plan for the ball field, would you continue to use it or hope to use it for baseball, or would you rather leave it the way it is now for soccer and other activities?
It definitely needs to stay a soccer field. We're, you know, we, we can definitely improve it for baseball and still use it for soccer, but it's, it's, it's main use right now is a soccer field, right, it's our fifth, home for our fifth, sixth soccer teams, and we ran our K2 program up there this year, but we do use it for baseball, it would be, and if it, with some major upgrades, we could use it for a lot of other things, but that's, we're talking a lot more money for the major upgrades in my, in my head.
Thank you. Anybody else get any questions? So I guess we're moving along. Old business. Oh, I guess we got items for the agenda, we already got one for the next meeting.
Yes.
Anybody else get any items for the agenda yet? They would like to have added? Okay.
Don't forget, we still have budget committee meetings going, let's keep the agenda light.
Yep. I guess we'll, somebody make a motion to adjourn for the slot board so we can go into the budget. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.